I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 with my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do audio windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINES. Just call. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, October 16th, meeting of the Pembroke Board of Selectmen. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple announcements. The first one, Ed Thorn won't be here tonight. His brother passed away down in South Carolina, so he'll be down there for the next few days, unfortunately. Dan, you have an announcement?
Yes, I have a report from Mike Valente. The Household Hazardous Waste Day that was held this past Sunday. The town contracted with Stericycle for this year's event utilizing the Mass State Bid process. And a brief summary of what happened was there was 130 vehicles that attended, which is about 40 percent rise from last year. And we had a grand total of 3,679 pounds and/or gallons of hazardous waste material. We generally do this twice a year, and it's been very successful and growing each time we do it. So we wanted to pass that information along, that it's a very good program.
Thank you, Dan. Lou, you also have a shout-out?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Over the past seven years, the Kraft family and the New England Patriots Foundation have placed a strong emphasis on celebrating volunteerism. Every week for Wealth of Season, the Kraft family and the foundation present the Patriots' Difference Maker of the Week Award, which recognizes deserving volunteers who go above and beyond to support their local community and their nonprofit organizations. Mike Cogburn of Pembroke has been selected as the Patriots' Difference Maker of the Week for his volunteer efforts with the Pembroke Titans Against Drugs. As a parent and a volunteer coach, Mike saw the need for education about drug abuse and addiction. Three years ago, he sought out the Pembroke Selectmen Educators and Community Groups and formed Pembroke Titans Against Drugs. Through this nonprofit, two Pembroke graduating seniors received the True Titan Scholarship Award each year for promoting the missions and goals of the organization through their community service and their choices during high school. Mike will join 14 other outstanding volunteers for a special in-game ceremony at the Patriots' on December 31st in their game against the New York Jets. He will also be featured in the Patriots Football Weekly Newspaper, Patriots Game Day Magazine, and on the Patriots website. I think this is a wonderful tribute to Mike and all the efforts that he has done. And we're all about recognizing our volunteers. So, thank you and good luck to Mike.
Next up on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Town Moderator, Advisory Committee, about the fall special town meeting. And I would just like to say that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15 and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in the open session will be recorded. So we have Town Moderator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate this opportunity to meet with your board and with the Advisory Committee, who has been working behind the scenes, as they always do, on every article, not just the financial matters, for months now, long before we even start thinking about it. And so I appreciate their hard work. Two things I just wanted to mention before we go through, well, three things, actually. One is, as I always say, these meetings are important not to determine an outcome, but just to determine a game plan, so that we get to an outcome that everyone can understand and be happy with. All these votes are subject to the voter's approval or disapproval or action, and so it's important that they come. I'm always happy to see large crowds at town meeting. Sometimes they show up for individual items, specific articles, specific capital expenditures or whatever, and that's important, and we're happy to see them. This may be not the most controversial town meeting that we've ever had, but nonetheless, it's important. And the town accountant and others, officials, will have a stroke if we don't have the figures finalized by the end of, well, shortly, in order to set the tax rate and close the books and everything else. So there may not be a lot of sexy items on this warrant, but they're nonetheless very important, so we really need people to show up. And this should not be a long meeting at all. Once again, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the meeting's at 7:00 next Tuesday, week from tomorrow night at the high school. We are going to have three very short presentations prior to the meeting. As you know, we have some significant capital expenses coming up. One is a potential request for a new police and/or fire station. We've already purchased the property, and we funded a building study. And so the Building Study Committee is going to be making a very brief presentation. There's no article on the warrant that is associated with that. We're not going to be asked to build or fund anything, but they are going to make a presentation in anticipation of a request for the spring town meeting. And there's also a proposal for a new DPW building as well, facility. And so the DPW, there is an article on the warrant associated with that. The DPW is going to have their consultant make a very brief, five-minute presentation just to describe what they will be asking for. And I'm not sure whether it'll be next, this meeting, or the next meeting, but they'll be discussing it. The decision will be coming up shortly. And then Mike Buckley's going to make a brief presentation. So if we have a quorum, we'll get right into it. If we don't have a quorum right away, we'll still have the presentations, and then hopefully by the end of the presentations, we can actually formally start the meeting. So the presentations will be very important, I think, very informative. And so I ask people, once again, to be there at 7:00, so we can start promptly. So as we usually do, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, we'll just go through the articles. They are posted on the town's website. The warrant articles are in hard copies of the Oldham Town Hall. And I know if you don't have an affinity for those watching at home, it's a little difficult to follow, but we'll try to go through these as quickly as possible. The first article is transfers that, and there's a borrowing authorization to close the books and balance the budgets. And it's, oh, this, I'm sorry, this is for capital projects only, right? Fund all capital projects. Some of it includes borrowing, some of it includes transfers. So that will be moved by advisory?
Yes.
Is there any disagreement that we know of on the items? The second article is another transfer article for wages and salaries. I'm guessing that's not controversial and will be moved by advisory?
Yes.
Article three is to, this is primarily to balance the snow and ice deficit from last year. And so I imagine there's no controversy in that, and that'll be moved by advisory. Anybody's agreement? Feel free, Mr. Chairman, to stop me if I'm going too fast.
No, I'd just like to say that both of the advisory and the Board of Selectmen have favorable action on all of those articles that you've read so far.
Should mention that. Article four is to, are we establishing a new fund here? Or are we just funding? Okay, so we're establishing a workers' compensation insurance fund and funding it, and it's recommended favorable action by both advisory and the Board of Selectmen. Advisory's been with that article. Article five is to fund an existing fund.
Correct.
Relative to separation pay, special injury. That seems not to be controversial, is recommended favorable action by advisory and selectmen. Advisory will move that one. Article six is a collective bargain, fund a collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters, permanent firefighters association. And are we all in agreement on that?
The Board of Selectmen submitted that article, and they will bring it up at town meeting.
Is the Advisory Committee making a recommendation?
Town meeting, yes.
Okay. So Board of Selectmen will move the article? And again, I'm going fast here. For those listening at home, this is, none of this is predetermined. This is all up to the voters to decide what the ultimate recommendation is. But we do have an agreed-upon contract.
Correct.
That's right.
Article seven is a special event bylaw proposal by the Board of Selectmen. This generated a little bit of controversy at the last meeting. It's a different version that's on this warrant. And advisory is?
Some have given a recommendation.
They made a recommendation yet, or not yet?
Town meeting, yes.
Okay. So Selectmen move that article?
Yes.
Article eight is to fund the hydraulic control program at Hoben Lock Pond. Everyone seems to be in agreement that'll be moved by advisory. Article nine is the algae control program at Oldham Pond. Everyone's in agreement? Advisory will move that one? Article 10, algae control program at Furnace. Everybody in agreement? Advisory will move that one? Article 11, make some changes to the classification of compensation bylaws with regards to an assistant to the town administrator position. Advisory Committee will move that one?
The Board of Selectmen, they're out of.
Okay. Do you want to?
Yep.
The board, then, will move that?
Right. Now, those other ones, eight, nine, and 10, is also submitted by the Board of Selectmen, but that's, advisory is going to do that?
Will move those three unless she wants to.
Well, that's fine.
And pond articles.
Why would keep a advisory? And so article 11, the Schedule A change, Board can move that.
Yep.
And does advisory recommend any favorable action?
Yes.
Article 12 is one submitted by the DPW. This would authorize the borrowing of $10 million for a new DPW facility. And I've kind of heard mixed things, whether that's, I take it that's not going forward at this point?
As far as we know.
As far as we know, okay.
The commissioners have said.
I heard that they were going to do the same thing, but I haven't seen anything in writing or anything on it. But I heard that they wanted the same as the fire and police, an opportunity to get up and speak.
Right, which they will have. I just don't know whether the articles, they're going to move the article.
Mr. Masterson, I was prepared to move it.
Could I go to move it?
No action. Move?
Move no action.
Oh, move no action, okay. I can discuss it without them. So I take it no one's recommending we go ahead with this article in this room? Okay, all right. Article 13 is, this doesn't fund, right? This just allows us to hire two full-time police officers, am I correct?
It just authorizes two more.
Okay, so we've already funded it.
Right.
Okay, and I've actually spoken to the chief, and he will move that. That's his article, he's moved it. But advisory's in agreement with that? Article 14 is another amendment to the wage and personnel scale, schedule, I'm sorry, submitted by the Recreation Commission. Advisory, Selectmen are in agreement? Advisory move that? Favorable action?
We can, although we have some issues with why they want to change the title.
Okay. Well, I'm open to suggestions. Should we ask?
Should they just want to do it?
Well, we can, we'll ask. Article 15 is to, this is the last installment of this, $5,000 to reimburse the Conservation Commission as promised. Everybody's in favor? I'm assuming so. Advisory Committee will move that article, okay. Article 16 is a change to the classification and compensation bylaws. Oh, this is a general change, right? That would allow a part-time worker to be eligible for step increases of one year as opposed to two. So everyone, Selectmen are in agreement?
Yeah.
Advisory in agreement? Advisory, you want to move that one?
Unless Deb wants to bring it, because it's her.
I'm going to speak for her, and my guess is that she's fine with having you folks move it. I'll speak to her. I mean, if she wants to, we want to give her the chance, but. Seventeen is the community preservation recommendations and requests, I'm sorry. And there's one, two, three of them. So it doesn't, any of these controversial? Usually it Brian Van Rijper, who's chairman of the CTC, that moved these, so everyone's in agreement. And, Mr. Chairman, that's it. Again, I just urge everyone to come early. We're going to draw either, I think at the end, the winners of the raffle for the little model police and fire cars. So hopefully we can get over quickly.
Yeah, I think you'll find on 14, they made an explanation on 14 that they're not asking for any money either. They're asking for that position, or the full-time position, to be in there, because if they decided not to have somebody work on certain months, they could have another person work as a full-time position. So they can probably explain that when that comes up.
Okay.
But it appears to be okay.
I'll ask, is the director, is she a town resident?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll touch bases. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the advisory.
A little bit early, but. Let me take, yeah, because the other people aren't here, but I noticed that we have an application for a change doing business as Gambino's Restaurant from Capone's Prohibition Pizza and Pub to Lomerta Pub and Pizzeria.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
How you doing?
Good, I'll read you a second.
Good.
Good evening, gentlemen. Let me give you a little introduction. My name is Scott Myers. I'm from Capone's Pizzeria, Scambino's Restaurant Incorporated. We do businesses at Capone's. My wife and I started the business in 1988 as a sub and pizza shop. And approximately 12 years later, approximately 2000, the Cellular One store had gone vacant beside us. Moved it there, requested an alcohol license, and put a dining room and bar in, which we did in 1999. In 2004, we opened a second location in Waymouth, branded in the same name. We asked for and received a letter from the Board of Selectmen at the time and the town manager that we had never had a violation, and recommendation for a liquor license, which we obtained, and operated that establishment until 2012, which we had been sold. We, to date, since we've been there, we've never had a violation with the town or state or any type of alcohol-related issues. We require all of our by attenders to be TIP certified. We hired Dram Shop to come in once a year to do role-playing with our by attenders to handle different situations. We close early. We have a 1:00 license. We close at 11:00, 12:00 on the weekends, I'm sorry, 12:45 on the weekends. It's not really about the alcohol, it's about food and beer. Brings me to the reason that we're here. We've been interested in opening a second location out of the country in Aruba. We vacation there a lot. We were given the opportunity for a location that we've been interested in for some time. Coincidentally, this establishment's called Soprano's, right where we wanted to open. So it's like a rip-off on their brand. So we, under much thought and bouncing the idea around, we decided to rebrand under Arreta, which goes with the bar. It's like it's a prohibition dining room, like it's hidden behind this pizza, in a pizza shop, as like a speakeasy. So it sort of goes with the secrecy and that whole type of thing. We have remodeled completely, new floors, new decorations, new furniture, new paintings. And with that, we were asking just to change the DBA. It's Gambino's Restaurant Incorporated, always has been. We just want, would like to change the DBA to Arreta Pub and Pizzeria. If I may, Mr. Chairman, use a copy of the menu. It's very similar to what we had. We're specializing in some of the things that have been very popular, as far as still pizza subs, sandwiches, Italian dinners. There's really not a change in the establishment at all.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Sure.
I think I speak for the whole board, where I say we'd love to all visit your new location down in Aruba.
We're looking at 2020 of the locations available to us that we're interested in opening. Very excited about it. Our daughter is one of our fire managers. She's worked there on the island for the last four months. She's a Suffolk Law student right now, and she works, she has a few nights a week. She spent the last four months in Aruba working as a by-attendee, while the number-one place is dominated. We brought a few cocktails back from Aruba that were very popular down there, we'll be offering in our establishment.
Awesome, sounds good. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, then I need a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that all the paperwork that you submitted is before us. There's no issue with it at all. And I'm sure that most of the board members, I'll speak for myself, very familiar with your restaurant here at Pembroke. So we wish you all the best.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the application of Tina Myers of Gambino's Restaurant, Inc., for a change of doing business as from Capone's Prohibition Pizzeria and Pub to Lomerta Pub and Pizzeria on license number 00049-RS-0960, exercise at 254 Church Street.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you very much, Sean. Good luck, both of you, in the road.
Thank you all. Drink's on me, you guys.
I'll have the record show she said that after we took the vote.
Is Christopher Graham around?
Yes.
There he is. Been looking for you every week here. Heard some good things about you tonight by a former, not a former, one of our Selectmen here.
Oh, good.
That's already took your advice.
Took your advice. Oh, good, glad. So you are getting an audit?
The contractor has been, had an audit, and they're sending in the insulator in a week from Friday.
Awesome.
So that's great.
Just so the people know, this is Christopher Graham from Graham Built Corporation, solicitation permit request, and he's before the board tonight on an application for a door-to-door solicitation permit. And he's not specified any duration or hours for the request.
I can clarify.
Previous permits have been approved for 11 to 7:30 on Monday through Friday, and 9 to 3 on Saturday and Sunday, for a period of 90 days. Is that something that you'd be?
Yes, yes, that sounds perfect.
Okay.
I don't imagine we'd go out after dark, but.
He's satisfied all the core requirements, and the Selectmen's office has forwarded the chief of police's application and presentation for the next permitting step, which includes a comprehensive background check, with final permit to be issued by the chief of police. So tell us a little bit about your business and.
So I work in the Mass Save program, and we have six vans, about October 16th, employees. We're prone substantially and would like to continue to do so and have better control over it. I feel a good way to do that would be by marketing and explaining what the program does. There's over 100 contractors that work in the program currently, and we're a tier-one contractor. We get rated by the work that we do. So there's actually an outside inspector that comes to inspect the work. Another inspector that comes to inspect the inspector. They don't come to every single job, but they do go to, I'd say, 80%. The second inspector goes to maybe 20% of the jobs or so. They also give a customer a little survey to fill out, was the crew on time, were they neat, were they professional, to explain what they're doing. And we're a tier-one contractor. Actually, about five years ago, I made a recommendation of Mass Save that they make a higher tier than the tier-one. They just did that this year. But I have to say that we're in that tier. It has a 9.75 rating, it's an A-plus tier. They send us a lot of work, and we've been in the program for over five years now. We're the one contractor out of the 100-plus contractors that work in the program that just specialize in doing air sealing only. And all the work through the Mass Save program that we do is at no cost to you. I wouldn't say the word "free" because the way the program's funded is that every single month, when you pay your utility bill, a certain percentage of your bill has a spot where they take some of the money out of the bill and allocate it towards the Mass Save program. We've enjoyed working in this program, where we're able to help customers on a daily basis save money in their homes. And besides saving money, they're more comfortable, and it's also good for the environment. So it's very rewarding in that sense, the work that we actually do. And most of you will probably wonder, what is air sealing? And that's a really great question. So what we do when we show up to a home is that we exchange pleasantries, put on our booties, install a drop cloth, and run a blower door test. Blower door test depressurizes the inside of the home at 50 Pa.S. That's a measurement of air movement. We record the results from that test. After we're done doing that, actually, excuse me, before we do that, we run the combustion safety test, where we test your heating equipment to make sure that it doesn't backdraft the combustion efficiently, record the results from that test. If it passes that test, we'll proceed to the blower door test. And the blower door test is a big metal fan that gets installed right at your front door, and it has a metal frame with fabric that goes around it, connects to a computer, that measures the speed that the home is being depressurized at, and how much air is going through the fan. We record that number, and then we start doing our work. What our work entails doing is crawling around up in the attic, following wall tops, wire penetrations, and along chimneys. What this does is going to reduce the amount of air cycles that happen inside your home. When you do that, your heating equipment won't come on, or your cooling equipment won't come on as often. That happens and makes two really great things, or two really cool things happen. One would be the occupant saves money and becomes more comfortable in their own home, because the heating system doesn't have to come on, or the cooling system doesn't have to come on as often. So that's really the meat and potatoes in what we do. Before we're done, we install weather strips and door sweeps. That's typically what most customers vocalize to their friends and family members and neighbors, that we do weather strips and door sweeps. But the real meat and potatoes is the air sealing. Your insulation really is ineffective if air's going through it. It acts more like a filter than an actual insulation material. So this is really helpful to reduce the expenses of, you know, everybody's utilities over the winter and summer, and keep people more comfortable. And we really enjoy doing it, because the customers don't have to pay us any money. Typically, it's all at no cost, funded 100% through the utilities, which we work with, the Mass Save program. Do you guys have any questions about the Mass Save program or anything that I mentioned? I know I went through it pretty fast.
No, I've actually had it. No, I've actually had it, I've actually had them at my house before, and they, they did a great job, and actually found that I was, really needed a lot of insulation up in my attic, and they, you know, replaced a lot of insulation up in there, and actually it did save me money, so.
Good.
I was happy about that.
So, when you think about it from a daily standpoint, how much would you pay per day to be more comfortable? And this is basically a program that you pay already, I scrutinized my utility bill the other day, and ours is really expensive, but it was fifty dollars a month that I paid in the Mass Save program. So, I was happy that we did get insulation worked on as well through the Mass Save program earlier this year, and look forward to taking advantage of it again. Because every couple of years, the program changes, before they used to give out the CFL, carbon fluorescent light bulbs, now they give out the LEDs, just do different things, but now they have duck sealing in the program, so if you have metal duck work in your attic, we can go there and seal and insulate it, and that'll help obviously get the heat or the cooling.
They change your thermostat as well.
Yeah, they'll change your thermostat as well.
Yep.
There's a ton of stuff under the Mass Save program, so I just want to let people know about it, and that's why I put the application to do the door-to-door solicitation, and primarily work in neighborhood, or do the door-to-door in neighborhoods that we've already been working in. It's just an easier sell to say that we've worked in this neighborhood.
Awesome.
But there's no actual physical sale.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to say for the record that I'm very familiar with energy audits, I've had one done in my house, and I have no axe to grind with the applicant, I don't know, I don't know his business, but I will not vote for our door-to-door solicitation.
We'll cancel each other out, because I will. But I think everybody here knows Chris, he's a member of the Chamber of Commerce, he's a good business, they're up on Route one thirty-nine, and the whole audit and all the change they made cost me twenty-two dollars.
Oh, my gosh, really? That's amazing, awesome.
That was worth it.
Yes.
The jury's still out on the heat, because we haven't had to turn it on yet.
All right.
But if nobody's got any more issues to go over, I would move to approve the application of Christopher Graham on behalf of Graham Built Corporation for a door-to-door solicitation permit, authorizing sales from eleven AM to seven thirty PM Mondays from Friday, and from nine AM to three PM on Saturday and Sunday, license eligible for renewal on its expiration date of January sixteenth, twenty eighteen, subject to the approval and permit card issuance by the chief of police.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so open for discussion. The only thing I wanted to add in here is that I too was, was just like Lou, really didn't care particularly for door-to-door salesmen banging on my door, but, but the town voted in October two thousand and sixteen to adopt a door-to-door solicitation bylaw, and in that bylaw, you have to abide by that bylaw from what the police chief tells you, and what, if somebody doesn't want to be solicited at their place, then they call and put their name on the list, and, and everybody that does get a door-to-door solicitation permit has to abide by that. So, I've kind of changed my views a little bit about door-to-door salesmen, because if I, if I don't want them, that's all I have to do is call and say, I don't, you know, I don't want somebody banging on my door, and so if they do come bang on my door, then they're going to have a problem. So, it's, it's, you could either put a sign out in front of your door or your house, or just put your name on the list, and I'm sure the chief will give you that list or whatever when it, when it comes time to do the door-to-door salesman. So, other than that, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, so it'll be four to one. So, you get your permit.
Thank you guys for having my time, I appreciate it.
Just see the chief, and you'll be all set.
Thanks for the tip.
Okay.
Yes, I just took advantage of the program. Good to see you again.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We need a vote to proclaim Friends of the Pembroke Public Library Week, October fifteenth through October twenty-first.
Move favorable action by the board of selectmen.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Proclamation is on the second part of the page here.
It seems like a great program to me, and I hope they raise a lot of money.
Awesome. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Five to zero, so very good. We need a vote to transfer three thousand dollars from Pembroke Fund to the strategic planning. The town administrator has requested it.
I would move favorable action by the board of selectmen.
Second.
Any questions or comments? The date that this is going to be done, I believe, is in February?
November?
Oh, it's November.
In two thousand twelve, it was held in November.
Oh, okay.
Once there's a commitment, we're going to set dates in November later.
Okay, so is this going to be a presentation?
Yes, it'll be a two-day seminar put on on a Thursday for department heads, and a Saturday for boards, committees, commissions, and members of the public. They'll take a survey, they'll discuss issues before the town, and talk about financial strategy, so.
Okay, and what's the three thousand dollars for? What is it?
It's going to fund the Suffolk University's Moatly Center for Public Management's time preparation compilation presentation.
Oh, okay, all right.
Ultimately, the town will get a report.
Okay, awesome, good. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Very good. You people here from the ski?
Yes.
Go ahead, okay. So, we get a couple of minutes. You're on at seven forty, but as long as you don't mind coming a little, a few minutes early, we'll put you on now then.
We're going up, gentlemen.
Come on up. So, you're, you are?
I'm Reed, the store manager, I was down here last year, same event we got going on again this year.
Okay. From two ninety-six Old Oak Street?
You got it.
And you're requesting a special liquor license for the annual two-day event to be held on November fourth and fifth?
The event actually runs Friday, but we were just requesting the license for the Saturday and Sunday there.
Okay. And this is your annual ski and snowboard tent sale?
Exactly.
Okay.
Pretty much the same event we had last year, only no worthy change, we have a little bigger tent we'll put up this year. We had pretty good last year, and hopefully continue to keep building the event, and appreciate the town's support very much. That.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
What kind of products are you going to be selling in the tent?
We usually put all just apparel out, we intend to ski jackets, pants, that sort of stuff. We actually conduct all the transactions inside the stores still, but that's what will be out there. The inside is devoted to where the skis, boots, bindings, and snowboards, that type of thing. I think we'll have a little patio furniture outside as well as our summertime offering at the ski shop.
Very nice.
Yep, a couple things to sit on in the life.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I would move to grant the one-day liquor license of Reed Almondinger of Sutton Ski for the sale of beer and wine on November fourth, twenty seventeen, from twelve to six, twelve to ten rather, PM, on November fifth, from twelve noon to six PM at two ninety-six Old Oak Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would just add that they've been a good business in town for a number of years, and they are very responsible, and they'll do a good job.
Is that where you get your ski board?
No, as a matter of fact, I have a kayak that I bought many years ago, before they were even in town.
Do you use the kayak to go down the hills in the snow?
No, but that's a good suggestion, actually.
People here currently do that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope, five to zero.
Good, gentlemen, appreciate your time this evening.
Have a good time, we'll try to stop by there and see everything.
Don't stay all day, Tom, I don't know where to find us.
Okay.
Okay. You have to go the hill next to your house, it'd be a good one to go down.
Well, we used to go down that, right down from the top of my house, down the side stairs, down the other stairs, and we had to have somebody on the road down below to watch the cars coming by, and we'd open up the gate to the beach and go right out down that hill, out onto the, out onto the pond in the winter, when it was frozen.
Yeah, I'm a little old with that now.
I don't think I'd try it now, but. We need to make a nominee for the Old Colony MPO, as a member, Selectman Dan Tribuco serves as a representative to the Old Colony Planning Council, with the alternate member, Dan Taylor of the Planning Board, and a chance please find a request from the OCPC to nominate an elected member of the Board of Selectmen to serve on the Old Colony Metropolitan Planning Council.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's very evident to me, and quite obvious to all of us, that Dan Tribuco is the right person to take the position, and he should have our entire support, because he has been the alternate for many years prior to the loss of Jerry Dempsey, and he took the seat on the OCPC shortly thereafter, and has done a terrific job, and has kept us well informed, and I think he'd do a great job for the county as well.
Awesome, is there a second?
Second.
I appreciate that kind words, thank you, Arthur.
Anybody have anything to say before we take a vote?
Well, I'll just say that the, this is a nomination for the Metropolitan Planning Organization as a member, and my name goes in the hat with eight other communities that are over fourteen thousand, so it's, it's still a competitive race to become a member, but this is the first step.
Awesome, okay. Like to see you on there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Five to zero. Very good. Need to vote a, to sign a deed to convey parcel B two dash three one one five on Butler Street, as voted at the annual town meeting, May ninth, two thousand and seventeen. This is a quick claim deed that we need to approve.
I would move that the deed be signed by the board of selectmen.
Second.
Okay, move to execute a quick claim deed for the conveyance of assessed parcel B two three one one five, Butler Street, as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, five to zero, good. Need a vote to accept the minutes of October second, two thousand and seventeen.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board accept the minutes of the selectmen's meeting dated October second, two thousand seventeen, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Very good. So, we do have a record of approved bills for October eleventh. On October eleventh, pleased to report that I personally reviewed twelve accountable payable warrants totaling nine hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and eight and ninety-eight cents, and two payroll warrants totaling two hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two and sixteen cents, prepared by the town accountant and authorized the itemized expenditures for payment. Need a second?
So moved.
So moved. All those in favor who accept on that?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, do we have anything for, ask the selectmen, Lou didn't, Ed didn't give you anything to talk about for?
No.
Administrator's, okay, anything for ask the selectmen? Anything on the new business?
Can we go back to old business for a minute?
Yeah, I didn't see the old business there, but I do have something on the old business I wanted, go ahead, Arthur.
Okay, I just, I asked a couple of weeks ago for an update on the Board of Health legal bills, because we've had one member of the Board of Health basically abusing the office, about the only phrase I can think of. The Board of Health in two thousand fifteen, calendar year two thousand fifteen, spent exactly no dollars on the legal side of their expenses. In calendar year twenty sixteen, it went up to eighty-three hundred and two dollars. And from January first of two thousand seventeen through September first, and we all know that that's going to be light, because September first is when a lot of other things took place, but that was just ten dollars short of ten thousand dollars. Basically, it's about eighteen thousand dollars up until September first of this year, and it's basically money that's been flushed down the toilet, because we've had to bring in our legal team to handle things that have been created by a person who's trying to use the office as a vindictive form of government, and I just think the public should be aware of the fact that they don't necessarily need legal help in most cases, but we've spent, as I said, eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars in legal fees in the last year and a half, and I think it's just an awful waste, and I think it needs to be pointed out.
The only other thing that I wanted to bring up was that we did send a letter to the city of Brockton, and we also sent copies to Central Plymouth County Water District Commission, the mayor of Brockton, Brockton City Council, Division of Marine Fisheries, State Representative Josh Cutler, the state senator, Vinny DiMascido, Vinny DiMascido, in regards to, pretty much of a demand letter from us to Brockton indicating that they should be working better with Brad Chase from the Division of Marine Fisheries, and also the Pembroke Fisheries Commission to stop any diversion of fish into Silver Lake. Unfortunately, I talked to Brad Chase today, he was, he was on his way on a flight somewhere, and he told me that he just assigned some people to Silver Lake to investigate a fish kill down there, and from what they've found out so far is that it was all a bunch of juvenile heron, and he doesn't know whether it's from last year or from this year, but, so we'll find out what that is, but the city of Brockton has to step up here and take care of, and help out with this diversion pipe, allowing fish to get in there, to help with the problem down there. Pembroke Fisheries went down and strung a net down there the other day, a couple guys, we bought our own net and put it down there, because we don't want to see that, and Brockton has agreed not to divert anything until after we give them the okay, that it's okay to divert. So, we are making some progress on that, but there's, hopefully, the city of Brockton sees that, that, that they, you know, they're going to want to work with both us and the division, and ought to straighten this problem out, so. They have a right to take the water, but they don't have a right to take the fish with it, and, and unfortunately, if the fish go there, they never come back out, so they're either food for other fish, or we lose them, so. So, we're on top of that anyway, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Could I just make a comment about Selectmen's lawyer's report on legal expenditures for the Board of Health? We all know that when you need a lawyer, you need a lawyer, but lawyers cost money, and eighteen thousand dollars is a lot of money when we're looking at every dollar we can get for many improvements of personnel that we believe that the town needs. many improvements of personnel that we believe that the town needs, and I'm hoping that after the next big event we have here is town meeting a week from tomorrow night, but I think when the town administrator returns to work and after the town meeting is over, I'd like to have another discussion about this issue. It all revolves around what can we do about it? I don't know what we can do about it, but I think rather than just letting this go after spending $18,000 to $19,000, I don't think we should do that. So I'd just like to revisit the issue and what possible actions we can take to avoid additional expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can actually put that on the agenda for...
October 30?
Yes. Uh, we do have some upcoming issues. Again, October 24th is the special town meeting. October 30th, 7:00 p.m., there's a swearing-in ceremony at the Pembroke, Pembroke Police Offices. To be determined, there's a quarterly meeting with the advisory committee. And is there a need to go into executive session?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chairman. I would move the board goes into executive session to discuss the possible discipline of the town employee and the possible resolution of the same.
Who would be coming back out into open session to make any comments?
There's no need to return into open session after executive session.
If we make an agreement in executive session, do we need to do that publicly afterwards?
No, we do not.
We do not, okay. Okay, by roll call, and vote to go into executive session? Oh, nobody gave us a motion.
I'll second it.
I didn't hear, second it.
Yes.
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. So that will conclude tonight's meeting of the Pembroke Board of Selectmen for October 16th. We're going into executive session, and there'll be no need to come out of executive session to discuss any other matters at this time, so I guess...
Strictly for adjournment purposes?
Yeah, just to adjourn, so just like to say Halloween is coming, fall is coming, the, the trees and everything look really nice, there's some good chilly mornings coming up, and so have a good week, and we'll see you next week.